Hello and welcome to City Council. We're excited to have everyone here tonight. And we actually probably have our biggest house full since COVID-19 in our audience today. And we have a lot of exciting things on our agenda. We'll go ahead and start our meeting with a roll call, please.
Councilmember Dennehy. Absent. Councilmember Gonzalez, absent. Councilmember Hockes.
Here.
Councilmember Meisner.
Here.
Councilmember Reed.
Here.
Councilmember B. Smith.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Hamrick.
Here.
Mayor Smith.
Here. We'll go ahead and have our invocation by Sean Meager from the Livingstone Calvary. Thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you for having me. Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for our city council members who faithfully serve our community. And Father, I pray that you would bless them for their sacrifices that they make to serve our community. Heavenly Father, we know that you are the God of peace. And so we invite you to preside over this meeting tonight. And I ask that when these council members have different opinions, that they would have unity of spirit. Father, I ask that you would help each of them to work as a unified team and combining ideas for a great outcome. Help them to work as a whole rather than as individuals trying to promote their own agendas. And may they have the spirit of camaraderie as they work together on a shared mission representing the citizens of Canyon City. Father, I pray and ask, God, that you would give them wisdom to know what to do. I pray, Father, and ask that you would give them courage to do what is right. And I pray for them to make uncompromising stands, Lord, that are rooted in the truth. And I ask these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you. We'll rise for pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're going to change up the agenda a little bit. We're going to go ahead and start with our recognitions for the CCPD so that we can take care of our own little miracle baby that's come here today and make sure that we take care of his needs. So I'm going to invite Chief John Schick to come and get us started.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, I stand before you this evening filled with immense pride as we recognize members of your Canyon City Police Department for excellence in policing. The two incidents that I speak of tonight that we reference represent the very best efforts in policing. Each of the officers represented in these events, whether they were a key role or a supporting role, represented themselves, the agency, and the industry in the best possible light. The first event that I want to speak of tonight is a lifesaving event award that we're going to offer to K-9 Officer Austin Phillips. On November 10th, 2020, shortly after 11:00 PM at night, Officer Phillips and Officer Nelson, Kirsten Nelson, responded to a medical assist call located on South Ranalds Avenue in Canyon City. The call was dispatched as a 15-month-old infant choking and believed not to be breathing. Both Phillips and Nelson responded running Code 3 to the incident, arriving two minutes after the call came out. As K-9 Officer Phillips arrived on the scene, the infant's father handed K-9 Officer Phillips the baby. The infant had begun, began turning blue, confirming for Officer Phillips that the child was not breathing. Phillips quickly assessed the child and immediately began conducting CPR on the infant, alternating between two-finger chest compressions and back blows. During the resuscitation efforts, the infant started to breathe again while spitting up a lot of liquid. Officer Phillips conducted CPR on the infant for approximately two to three minutes and subsequently turned the child over to AMR medics who confirmed the infant was now breathing and had a steady pulse before transporting him. In this light, I respectfully request City Council to recognize the extraordinary lifesaving efforts of Canyon City Police Department K-9 Officer Austin Phillips in presenting him with a lifesaving award this evening in accordance with CCPD Policy 1016.4. I ask also that council recognize Officer Kirsten Nelson and Detective Chad Gary, who were both on scene that evening, committed and supported and supporting roles for their, what they provided during this critical incident. I also ask council, I would encourage council to hear from the grandmother this evening, who is of the infant, Lynette Howe, who was on scene that evening. Ms. Howe, come on up. Ms. Howe is, aside from the officers and medics, was one of our corroborating citizens accounts. And if you don't mind, I'd like to read her account real quick before she offers a few things, before she makes her comment. Sergeant Elliot Van Dyke spoke with Ms. Howe in reference to this incident. She was a witness on scene and the child's grandmother. She's the one that dialed 911 and asked for medical assistance after the child was found unresponsive and not breathing. Mrs. Howe made contact with Officer Phillips as he arrived on scene and asked him to please help. Officer Phillips responded quickly to the scene and she says, Ms. Howe says, he was absolutely wonderful. She further stated that he was quick to the draw and wasted no time in ministering the CPR that eventually saved her grandchild. Ms. Howe provided an update on the child's status, who is also here with us this evening. And he is doing well and reporting that he hasn't had any seizures in some time. Ms. Howe?
My hands are here.
Yes, you do.
Thank you so much. And I don't know what to say, but thank you. And
That's, you said it all.
It's, you don't know what to do in a situation like that, but when you have someone that shows up and takes control, that's what you need. So, thank you.
Well, we'd like to invite Officer Phillips up and those who are on scene, as they deserve an amazing award and well-deserved recognition.
Want to go up front?
City Council, if you want, you're welcome to come down as well. I'd recommend wearing your mask.
We're going to get a picture with you.
What's his name?
Grayson.
Grayson, okay.
Listen, this is the star of the show.
All right. All right, council. Let's gather around. Half here.
Thank you. Thank you so much for what you do. Now he's going to be calm.
Now he's going to be calm.
Thank you.
No, thank you.
Each and every one.
You take care of yourselves.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Bye-bye, little man. Okay, moving along. This next, this next recognition is concerning a significant arrest. On Sunday, January 17th, 2021, the Canyon City Police Department, acting on a tip from a confidential source established by Officer Shelby Beck, who is right here, where we were able to identify and arrest an armed suspected drug dealer. The intelligence received put CCPD and the Sheriff's Office on alert to a possible vehicle near the, a vehicle and residence near the city, but actually outside city limits in Fremont County. While working collectively on this tip with Fremont County Sheriff's Office to try and glean additional intelligence on the residence, K-9 Officer Phillips was out on patrol, recognized the vehicle, the target vehicle that was in our city limits. The stop was based in whole or in part upon Officer Phillips' training and experience relevant to the confidential intelligence, possible traffic infractions, and corroborating information such as the suspect was operating a rental car, which is often a preferred method of travel for subjects carrying or distributing narcotics. With an assist from K-9 Officer Owenby, Phillips and Owenby stopped the vehicle within the city limits to begin their criminal narcotics interdiction investigation. They quickly discovered a rather menacing-looking firearm pictured here, a 40-caliber pistol with a rifle attachment, and two 28-round magazines. After detaining the suspects for their safety, Officer Phillips deployed his K-9 partner boot, K-9 boot, who quickly established probable cause for the officers to search the vehicle. During the search, officers discovered nearly a half a pound of methamphetamines and 21 grams, 22, nearly 22 grams of heroin. This police action illustrates the significance of collaboration both within and external to our agency. Criminals today respect no jurisdictional boundary. Our criminals are Fremont Counties, our criminals are Fremont Counties, Florence, PDs, Pueblo, and so on. As an ongoing investigation, this case illustrates the robust impact of collaboration at all law enforcement levels and what they can have on crime. I ask council to recognize excellence in police work afforded by Officer Shelby Beck, K-9 Officer Austin Phillips, and Will Owenby. I'd also like to give an honorable mention to the rest of Front Side Night Shift team that helped in this case in supportive roles. Sergeant Canada, Officers Nelson, Wade, and Nellinger. Without their support, these officers wouldn't have been able to matriculate the case as far as they did. And that case is moving forward today because of that. Come on up. Everybody, come on up.
Come on down, council.
Hold on to this one.
All right, chief, you stand. Council, come on, gather around.
Are we skinny enough? Good?
Thank you all.
Thank you, guys.
Any final words you'd like to give Chief Schick on behalf of our excellent CCPD?
I'm immensely proud of these folks. They represent us very well every single day. This is just, this is just a, an example of the excellence that they go out and offer our citizens every day. And I thank you, Madam Mayor and members of council, for taking time to help us recognize them. This is, these are significant events for us. So, thank you.
It's an honor and a pleasure, and we look forward to every opportunity to recognize the stellar and amazing sacrifices and commitment that the CCPD makes for our life and safety to truly save lives and to protect our community from the drug industry.
Thank you, Mayor.
I believe we might have some comments from City Council. Is that right? Jim, did you have something?
I just want to briefly say that I appreciate the chief explaining the situation, but the situation was thousands times more dangerous than what was explained here tonight in terms of you people putting your life on the line for the citizens of this community. And I appreciate it. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Tim Dennehy's name came up, but I'm not sure how that could have. We'll move on. Okay, we'll move on to Councilmember Hockes.
Oh, well, it brings me back to a lot of those stuff that through my career. You guys do an outstanding job, but always remember, the most important thing is protecting each other and then making sure that you go back home to your family, your loved ones, your friends, and everything else. And stay out there, stay safe. And if you stay safe, you'll keep us safe. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Hockes.
Councilmember Reed.
I just wanted to say how much you are all appreciated, the sacrifice that you make away from your family, especially in a world right now where so many people don't often appreciate the challenging job that you all have. I just want to say from the bottom of our hearts that Canyon City is so sincerely thankful for the job that you're doing every day. We don't say it enough. And so I am very happy that we have this opportunity to be able to see all of you here tonight and recognize that. And I hope that there's a lot more opportunities in the future to be able to recognize you. But until we see you again, stay safe. And again, thank you so much for your sacrifice.
Mayor Pro Tim Hamrick.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to echo all the other council members' comments. And really, thank you very much for what you do. We do appreciate it. It is, it is so important to our society to, that you do the job that you have sworn to do. And we do appreciate it and all the sacrifices that you make. Thank you.
Councilmember Smith.
I always have to follow these guys. So, I'll just say thank you for you guys' service. We really appreciate it.
And I just have two final requests. And one, in behalf of our CCPD family, to ask for prayer, continued prayers for Commander Husky as he undergoes his cancer treatments and surgery this Wednesday. And that is also really near and dear to our heart. And second, if Chief Schick and Carrie, this is for you two, is if we can find when, and there is an upcoming CPR class, to promote that as we do it, so that we can make sure that other parents and grandparents and loved ones can have the opportunity to get CPR certified and be able to pay it forward in their lifesaving skills and abilities. But again, I think these guys deserve another standing ovation, please, for everyone.
All right, thank you again. Carry on with saving our lives every day and protecting us. We sure appreciate you all.
Thank you.
And we will move on now to council member announcements, please. Mayor Pro Tim Hamrick.
We do have a vision committee meeting this Wednesday, starting at 5:00 PM, where we're going to be talking about Constantino's property, Skyline Steel property. And so that's a informal discussion amongst council members and the public.
Any other announcements for council? I will give you a little spoiler alert. A big announcement's going to be made in the community. Fremont County, built for zero, which is a methodology used by the homeless coalition to address homelessness, they have just reached function zero for housing veteran homeless folks. And they are the first county in the state of Colorado to achieve functional zero for veteran, for homing veterans. And so we're really excited for the achievements that they've been making. And they are also working really hard towards making the same achievements for the chronic homeless. And so I just wanted the city council to know that they're doing some pretty awesome things there, especially on these cold, cold nights, grateful that they have been finding housing. With that, we will turn our time over to the consent agenda. Ryan Stevens.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. Item 8A is the approval of minutes for the regular city council meeting on February 1st and the general government meeting on February 3rd. 8B awards bid 3018 for lawn maintenance. It's a second extension to yard crafters, an amount not to exceed 35,000. 8C awards bid 1021 for septic tank and vault toilet to Twin Enviro, not to exceed 20,200. Award, see, 8D is the award bid 1221 trash collection. That's split between Twin Enviro Services of Penrose and Howard Disposal and amount not to exceed 2,600. 8E authorizes the mayor to sign a water services contract for 1420 Willow Street. 8F authorizes the mayor to sign the Chamber of Commerce 2021 agreement. And 8G is to file a list of bills.
Any questions or corrections from council? Councilmember Meisner.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just got a couple of questions. On the item 8B, we're talking about expanding the service?
Yes, sir.
I was under the, didn't we add some parks people to take care of some of those issues?
We added parks people to the forestry service to take care of trees, not necessarily
Right, okay. And then on 8E, it seems like on exhibit A, maybe, I don't know if Adam answers this or you, but it seems like there's a lot of different addresses there. 1420, 1428?
Yeah, so this one, the only contingency on it is they've got a shift, because they did a lot line adjustment in the county, they have to shift an existing service for 1428 on the frontage. So that's what's in that exhibit. It's explaining that they have to move that service line.
They're going to move it from 1420 to 1428?
Correct. In order to make a new tap for 1420, they've got to move the 1428 tap to the 1428 location.
Say that again?
So because, 1428, the lot for 1428 right now is a large lot, they cut it in half. And where the physical location of the 1428 tap is will now be 1420. So they'll make a new tap and relocate one.
Okay.
Mayor Pro Tim Hamrick.
Part of what, part of what we're doing, we, I say we, city council, yourself, the city administrator, and city staff is working on the, our program for getting people aligned with what we're trying to do. That's our balance scorecard approach. I'd just like to point out that on, we have one fine item here for cell phone service for $6,700. To me, an example of efficiency in government would be for someone to step forward and say, wait a minute, we have fully functional cell phones that include internet access is what I would imagine that we have. And for someone to say, hey, wait a minute, could we use the burner cell phones, the prepaid cell phones here in this case, because it's, not everyone, I'm sure, needs, you know, full internet access, all of the things that the modern smartphones provide, excepting yourself, of course. But the, but to say, is there a way that we could save money here? And so that's, I just want to make that point.
Yeah, when it comes to cell phones, we've shopped around to all the different providers. Not every city employee has internet access on their phone. We've got some city employees that have flip phones still. So when there are opportunities to save money, we're looking for them.
Thank you very much.
And I would like to invite Chris Webb to come up. She's here to represent the Chamber of Commerce. As you remember, we had tabled the approval of our contract because we wanted to be able to have a representative here and ask questions. And so, council, here is your opportunity. Jim, would you like to start?
Can I ask, okay. First question is really more directed at Ryan. But on page one, item, item two compensation number one, the last statement says that we're going to give him a check no later than 20 days following approval of the statement by city council?
Yeah, and that's typically what happens. We get monthly invoices from the chamber. We do the check request, and then it goes onto the list of bills. And when council approves the list of bills, the check gets sent out.
And then there's talk about reports that the chamber submits. Are they currently submitting those?
We do.
Yes, they do.
We submit them monthly with the invoice. We submit them to Ryan, but I think he's asked to also copy Rick and Tom on those.
That's all my questions. Thanks, Chris.
Chris, would you like to give us a report about how things are going at the chamber and what some of your goals for 2021 are?
We're just coming out of the COVID, of course. It's going well. We have new employees. So we're in training mode right now. We're getting ready for fulfillment. Last year, we, fulfillment of the visitors guide that we do, the Royal Court Visitors Guide. We're actually pretty busy. New members coming in. We have probably about 370 strong members of the chamber and new businesses coming in and joining.
Can you introduce us to your new employees?
Pardon?
Who are your new employees?
New employees? Well, Emmy Dennehy, and she worked for us last year a little bit, and she came back in. She does our events in the front desk. And then Dominique Passarelli, she took over for Haley. She does members relations. So.
Councilmember Meisner.
So, I did have another question. So I did have another question. On page one, item one, scope of services, item number three, was that added, or has that always been there?
That was added at your request, sir.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
I saw that.
And actually, we do take care of all the businesses in Fremont County through the visitor's guide and other areas. Members first, of course, that are in the chamber, but all businesses are always included.
I just felt it was important because we're using taxpayer money to support that operation. That taxpayer money isn't coming from members only, so I think there needs to be an emphasis that all businesses get included in that promotion.
Yes, and that's added in our statistics that we report monthly.
Thank you.
Councilmember Reed.
I was just curious, you mentioned the membership that you have right now. Do you know offhand about how many members you lost last year during COVID?
Around 20, 25.
Thank you.
Councilmember Meisner.
No, that's fair, while we're done.
Any other questions from council? All right, thank you for being here tonight, Chris. We really appreciate it.
Thanks, Chris.
Thank you.
Councilmember Meisner.
Okay, quick, Ryan, on cash disbursements, I'm sure this has always been there, but the construction use tax that we're paying to the county, is that what we're collecting and turning over?
Yes, sir.
And that always must always be there, and I've?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you, sir.
All right, if there's no further questions, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda and agenda. Councilmember Smith.
Madam Mayor and council, I move to approve the assent agenda as written. Consent agenda, there we go.
Any discussion? And I'll call a vote, please.
Second.
Oh, you do me a second, thank you. There's been a motion and a second. We'll call a vote. Councilmember Hockes.
Aye.
Councilmember Meisner.
Aye.
Councilmember Reed.
Aye.
Councilmember B. Smith.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Hamrick.
Aye.
Thank you, council. Ryan, can we now have our administrator report?
Sure, yes, Madam Mayor. So we have quite a few projects going in front of CDOT and other approving bodies. The Highway 15 pedestrian improvement project is being prepared to go out to bid. The US-50 pedestrian improvement project for design has been submitted to CDOT. The CMAC design has also been submitted to CDOT, and we're continuing to work on the Rhodes Avenue stormwater project as well. We continue to make progress there every week. So that is good when it comes to those certificate of participation bonds that we have. From economic development standpoint, we, grant writer Brandy Fowler continues to be extremely busy. We just received word that we will be receiving a grant for our law enforcement, mental health, and some peer-to-peer programs there, and that is very exciting news. We're going to be partnering with the Florence Police Department in that program as well. And of course, we had the meeting last week to discuss the comprehensive plan between city council and the planning commission. We will be meeting again on February 24th during the regularly scheduled planning commission to discuss some of those updates and have more discussion around the maps that were presented last week. I know we have four public hearings tonight, so I'll defer the rest of my time to council and their questions.
We'll start with councilmember Meisner.
Just to be quick, I noticed on page one, you make a reference to CDOT order to install tour signs at the East Gateway kiosk. I didn't even know we had a kiosk.
The East Gateway Pool Inn and kiosk, yeah, there's the kiosk there, and then?
They actually put one in?
That's why we need to get some signs, so you can find it.
Yeah, so this was the one that's been?
When did they put it in?
Been kicking around for almost 10 years.
Remember that pull-off that we built there?
Right.
Yeah, so the kiosk went in last several months, probably.
Okay.
Yeah, we'd been waiting on it, and they finally installed it.
Does it work?
Yeah, it's a, it's static display, it's?
Yeah, it's just pictures on a board.
Oh, okay.
More can be added there, but that was the, that was the CDOT grant that was Southeast Colorado.
Right.
The tourism one?
Yes.
Any other questions from council? Ryan, I do want to ask if you can give a nudge to Black Hills and Legacy Lands. There have been some questions getting funneled in about the status of the property across the street.
Yeah, I've got some calls out waiting for some responses.
Okay, thank you. And then I also just wanted to say thank you to the city council members and community leaders that we're able to meet to discuss the 150-year celebration for Canyon City. Several of you are in this room, and I think we're really excited about providing a year's worth of celebrating activities and events for Canyon City, and more's to come. With that, I will open the public hearing, and this is for the new liquor license for hotel and restaurant, and this is on, for the River Street.
And we'll have a staff report from the city clerk.
The owner, Greg Dorito, has turned in all his paperwork. He did a concurrent license with the state, so it's all been turned in with the state. And on my side, he is good to go. He's got everything in, that he's required to have in. And I think he just stepped out.
Yeah, he did. He's been here the whole time. His phone was ringing.
His phone was ringing.
While we're waiting for Greg to show up, you go ahead and go straight to the mic, Greg.
Okay.
But I do want to call attention to city council. You've been given a list of questions that you can look over and ask Greg, but before, I'd like you to talk about your new business venture and your process for your expansion on your liquor license.
Sure. Members of the council, thank you. It's always been an item that I drive by on my way home. It is the property of Ninth Street, formerly known as Somewhere Saloon, Griffin Sports Plaza, Judy's, The Rib House, numerous locations. I've always felt like it was a property that really could be a neat little asset to the community, and that was kind of a jewel in the rough, so to speak. And so when it became available, I took the opportunity to expand a business at a time when not normally, most people would not necessarily jump at it, but, you know, sometimes opportunity doesn't wait for it to be convenient. So I acquired the building with the intention of turning it primarily into a restaurant that does serve alcohol, but primarily a restaurant and a market area. So we've been in the process of a lot of cleaning and a lot of catching up of deferred maintenance, so that's what we're looking forward to.
And what kind of restaurants are you going to have?
That's been a million-dollar question, right? Actually, we just installed our pizza ovens last week, so there's going to be pizza and sandwiches, and it's going to feature deli sandwiches from the market side, and some, and fresh cold cuts, some emphasis on the Italian cold cut type of deli items.
Nice.
So.
So Greg, I'll start with the questions.
Absolutely.
And you already own a restaurant that serves alcohol. Have you had any incidents or any trouble with the state?
We did. A couple of years ago, we had an incident during a sting operation in which one of my servers, longtime server, served an underage agent, and we were cited. We followed protocol, we had our liquor suspension, and we've been incident-free since then. But in 20 years, I consider that a reasonably decent record, so I'll take it.
Yeah, and thank you for being upfront and honest about it. I'll turn the questions over to the rest of council. Councilmember Meisner.
Welcome, Greg.
Good evening, Jim.
This probably goes back to your time on council, but you're aware of the fact that historically, there's been issues with that property?
Absolutely.
And the back patio, or wherever it's at, and the noise that gets generated on that patio with the neighborhood.
Mm-hmm.
What's the, what's your arrangement there, and what kind of activities do you anticipate that would create that same scenario, or activities that you wouldn't have that wouldn't cause that scenario?
Okay. Well, there's a few things that I think have been a stimulus on that item, Jim. Councilman Meisner, excuse me. I believe that a lot of times with the strong emphasis of tavern sales in that location, there's been a lot of live music and things of that nature that become a problematic issue with neighbors and volume control. That's not our intention to have any live music there. The patio is specifically going to be outdoor dining, probably no more noise effective than you would see it, what we have right now at our current restaurant, or, you know, what some of the patio outside dining that have been nice additions to Main Street within the last six months. So I haven't spoken with all of the neighbors. I have spoken with several of them. They're all very happy to see some of the changes that have gone through. But I don't anticipate those issues to be recurring issues because of the change in nature of how we're going to conduct our business with a heavy emphasis on food and less on entertainment and evening events.
Yeah, I don't recall who the resident was, not that it matters, but, but at least, I would hope that you'd reached out to that particular individual that seemed to spearhead that whole group in terms of having concerns about that usage and noise and?
I will make an effort, Councilman Meisner, to locate that individual and speak with them specifically.
Okay.
And try and address their concerns and, yeah, try and set their mind at ease.
Right.
Because it is our intention to be a good neighbor to all of the homes and businesses over there, not, not be a thorn in the side, so to speak.
Cindy may have that information.
It was before my time. Yeah, it was before my time. I haven't had any complaints and/or anybody even questioned once we posted for this.
Well, Greg does have a good reputation in the community, and the change of nature of the business, I'm sure helps. And if that neighbor is upset, it sounds like they won't have any problem letting Greg know.
Yeah, and I would be more than happy if they're watching to meet with them and sit down with them, go over things, just to set their mind at ease.
Okay.
Mayor Pro Tim Hamrick.
Actually, the, Jim kind of asked a question that I was going to ask, but since I've got an open mic, Mr. Dorito, are you planning on, on living there?
On living there? No, I, I?
Oh, shoot.
If there was living quarters, Councilman Hamrick, I would, I would love to?
Move back into the city, right?
Be back within city limits. I certainly wish that the residency requirements were not as they are, but unfortunately, that's not the case as of right now.
Thank you.
Councilmember Reed.
Hey, Greg, I just wanted to say, first of all, I'm really excited that, especially in this crazy time that you're jumping into this new venture, so I was really excited to see this come up today. One of the things I was going to ask is a long, I mean, a pretty long time ago, when it was Judy's, that outdoor seating area was actually pretty cool, like plants, and it was before it was very much a tavern or anything like that, so I'm not aware of the stuff that Councilmember Meisner was talking about, but is that kind of what you're looking at getting back to, more of just like a relaxing food atmosphere back there?
Well, absolutely. The patio that Judy's had kind of established, I think, was really a nice foundation. There's been, as I said, a touch of deferred maintenance, so there's been some damage to that patio from the tree overgrowth and from the root structure, which it's my intention to remediate that. And I really would like to extend the patio, as you see in the footprint on there, to Ninth Street, just for visibility, because I feel that, you know, action begets action, and I think that people enjoy the outdoor dining in Colorado, especially in the temperate months. So that is my intention to refurbish that and bring it back to snuff.
That's exciting, thank you.
Councilmember Meisner.
Councilperson Gonzalez apparently is watching the meeting, and via text, she's informed me that the person that had the issue before has apparently moved.
Okay.
So whatever that's worth.
Okay, thank you.
If Councilmember Gonzalez is watching, can we change her from an attendee to a panelist so we can see her, and if she raises her hands, that we can attend to that?
I did mean to rat her out.
Oh, she, oh, maybe she's just watching and not in attendance.
Yeah, I bet she has a, on Facebook Live, that's how she had last time from work.
Well, hi, hi, Dolly.
I would like to address council, though, on an issue while I was in attendance when the chamber was up here, and I would like to extend my thanks to Councilman Meisner for the addition of that reminder to the chamber. They are, in fact, they're an asset to all businesses, and it is, while it is important to prioritize the members, it's also important to remember your foundation base. That is not, I think Chris is doing a great job. Unfortunately, hasn't always been the ability of them to understand that, that, that nature, and I've been firsthand witness to see that not always be the case. And I, and I think that it's important to sometimes have those reminders. We're stewards of the people and the people's funds, we're not independent minds, so thank you for reminding that.
Councilmember Smith.
I just wanted to quickly say that after reading through these questions, that I'm pretty confident through Greg's reputation that all of these boxes have been checked.
You don't want to ask about his criminal history?
I was, I was going to do that.
Feel free, I'm absolutely, no special treatment.
Or more importantly, item 5D.
He does have a baby face. Are you over the age of 21?
I am.
And are you?
Twice over.
Familiar with the Colorado liquor code?
I am.
Excellent. And when do you anticipate opening?
We are looking for a March, early April opening.
Wonderful.
My goal is I would like to get open before the summer months go into effect, so that my new crew can have some time to work some of the kinks out before tourism hits. It's my belief that as the vaccines are getting distributed and people are really homebound and anxious to get out, that it could be a very eventful tourist season this year for Southern Colorado, so I'd like to get them ready, ready in action for that.
Best of luck to you.
Thank you.
And we look forward to supporting your new restaurant.
Thank you, Mayor Smith.
Are there, is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak?
Check face, go ahead.
And then I would like to close the public hearing and ask for a motion to approve the Councilmember Meisner.
Madam Mayor and council, I move that we approve the new liquor hotel, restaurant, the liquor license hotel and restaurant for the River Street.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second, any discussion? Call a vote. Councilmember Hockes.
Aye.
Councilmember Meisner.
Aye.
Councilmember Reed.
Aye.
Councilmember B. Smith.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Hamrick.
Aye.
Thank you, council, and congratulations.
Thank you, council. You guys have a nice evening, stay safe.
And we will now open the public hearing for Mount St. Scholastica site. This is the second reading and adoption by the title only of Ornament Six, series of 2021. I'd like to invite Richard, turn the time over to Lisa, or?
Open the public hearing, and we will have a staff report from the museum director, Lisa Stutes.
All right, so the public hearing is open, and we'll turn the time over to Lisa Stutes, our history museum director.
Good evening, mayor and city council. We received the nomination form to designate the property known as Mount St. Scholastica, located within planning areas two and three of Mount St., or Scholastica Minor Subdivision as a local historic site pursuant to the city's municipal code. The current property owners of Mount St. Scholastica are the Homes of the Canyon Two LLC and Homes of the Canyon LLC. The property owner has been notified of this public hearing, both via mail and by signs posted on the property. The, there are four structures located within the proposed designated historic site. The East Building was built in 1897, the Residence Hall in 1961, and two buildings constructed after 1970, the Learning Center in 1979, and the Library Chapel in 1983. The site has been associated with the Catholic Benedictine Sisters of Chicago since 1890. The architect for the East Building, also known as the Fine Arts Building, was DA Bradbury of Denver, and the Langhart and McGuire of Denver was the architect for the Residence Hall. The historic and nonhistoric buildings have not moved from their original locations. historic and nonhistoric buildings have not moved from their original locations. The applicant form identifies the predominant architectural styles of the historic buildings within the parameters of the proposed historic site. The St. Scholastica Academy's East Building, also known as the Fine Arts Building, is defined as late Victorian with both Italianate and Queen Anne architectural elements. Is the oldest building still standing on the property. Is constructed, it was constructed in 1897 on the foundation of the old Colorado Collegiate and Military Institute Building. The East Building is currently listed on both the Colorado State Register of Historic Properties and the National Register of Historic Places. The Residence Hall, as described in the application, is a three-story block building with a brick and painted concrete exterior facade. The style is late-modern Expressionism or Italian, or international style of American architecture, which is influenced by the German Bauhaus movement, with a flat roof, large section of blank windows walls, structural framework, and unornamented windows that are flush with the exterior walls. The two nonhistoric buildings, which include the Classroom Building, also known as the Learning Center, and the Library Chapel Building, do not have very many noticeable or distinct architectural elements that can be attributed to any classical architectural style other than postmodern. The campus of Mount St. Scholastica Academy was built on the former site of the Colorado Collegiate Military Institute. The Catholic Benedictine Sisters of Chicago purchased the property from Mrs. Thomas Maken in 1890 for $15,000. Mount St. Scholastica Academy officially opened in September of 1890 with only 40 students, four Benedictine Sisters, and one lay teacher. Over the next century, the campus of the Mount St. Scholastica grew from just one building to over six structures at one point. Many of the older structures built by the Benedictine Sisters of Chicago were demolished several years prior to the closure of the academy in 2001. St. Scholastica closed in 2001 due to dropping enrollment and fewer nuns at the school to teach. The current owners conducted a thorough assessment of the remaining buildings on the campus. Their study found that the pool and gymnasium, as well as the maintenance building, the former carpenter's shop, were deemed too cost prohibitive to save and were demolished. The theater or lecture hall wing of the Learning Center had drainage issues that impacted the site and was also razed. The walkway or hallway corridor that connected the Residence Hall to the Learning Center was also considered unstable and demolished. The goal of the Homes of the Canyon is to revitalize the campus site as a living, work, play campus within walking distance of Canyon City's Downtown Business District. The significance of the property of Mount St. Scholastica Academy, it was the longest operating private school in Canyon City, contributing to the education of thousands of young women from 1890 to 2001. Mount St. Scholastica Academy first served as a private boarding school for girls in all grades. In the 1930s, the academy became a private girls' high school or college preparatory school. Girls from all over Colorado, the United States, and even the world attended this boarding school throughout the school's history. Many local families also enrolled their daughters as day students at St. Scholastica. Mother Frances Xavier Cabrini, an Italian-American nun, visited St. Scholastica Academy likely during her trips to Colorado in 1902 and possibly again in 1912. Mother Frances Xavier Cabrini was canonized a saint in 1946, thus becoming the first naturalized American saint in the Catholic Church. The local school also impacted the social and economic history of Canyon City. At the height of student enrollment at St. Scholastica, the school contributed over a million dollars annually to the local economy. Mount St. Scholastica Academy is indelibly linked to the small but noteworthy community of Catholic Benedictine Sisters of Chicago, who established the school and to the education of history of Canyon City. The Benedictine Sisters created a community within a community for the benefit of educating girls and young women that lasted over a century. Under these facts, the site meets the criteria for designating as listed in the city's ordinance. The site is at least 50 years old. The site represents a built environment of a group of people in an era of history. The site exemplifies cultural, political, economic, or social heritage in the community. The site also represents an association with a notable person, and the site is identified with historical personages or groups. At the public hearing for this nomination, the Historic Preservation Commission voted to support the Resolution Two of 2021 recommending City Council's approval for Mount St. Scholastica, located in Planning Areas Two and Three of the Scholastica subdivision, to be designated as a local historic site. Staff recommends City Council to approve Ordinance Six, which cites these findings of facts to designate Mount St. Scholastica as a local historic site. This concludes the staff report. I'm more than happy to answer any questions, and I believe Phil Lund, yep, is here in the audience representing the owners of this property.
Phil, why don't you go ahead and come up and address council? We already had the first reading two weeks ago, but today we'd like to take advantage of your presence.
Thank you. So, I want to commend the staff, first of all. Lisa specifically, she's been great to work with. We had a couple meetings prior to this, I think it was early December, and Ryan was present as well. And again, the staff is to be commended for professionalism and doing a good job with pulling all this together. And of course, we submitted it, but she's certainly put it into a good and report, better than I could have ever done. So, I just want to update you on what is happening at Scholastica, because it's sitting there, and I'm getting questions, what's going on, et cetera. We've got a Facebook page, and we post some stuff, but just a very quick update. There's a lot of stuff that has been happening behind the scenes. So, the Residence Hall, which I think will be approached on the second hearing, is basically completely gutted and ready to go as far as moving forward. And what has become important is the historical tax credits, both from the state and the federal. And this step here by the City Council and the City of Canyon City is going to make that feasible. So, we've already identified, we have two investors that are very interested in this, but the tax credits are something that is very significant in their interest in the property. And so, that's why we're pursuing that and making that happen. What is also happening is in making compliance with the state for the Residence Hall, we've got a number of features that we're actually changing out. We had a different heating system that we were putting in. Now that we're focused on the historical tax credits, our mechanical engineer is redeveloping that, and we're just wanting to keep the facade much like what it is. So, the next step after that is our general contractor is now submitting, going out for bids. And once we have that, those prices, we're able to put together a full budget, which is going to be submitted to the state, and they will tell us what is in compliance with getting the tax credits. And all of that goes to a pro forma, of course, for the investors, again, that some of you have actually met. They've met with Ryan, they've met with the mayor that we're looking at, and so, just again, so they could get a feel for Canyon City and is this a good investment. And I think they represented you well to suggest that Canyon City is, in fact, a good place to put dollars and that there's going to be a future return. So, that is absolutely moving forward. As far as Residence Hall, I am optimistic that we can start construction probably in around June, if everything moves forward. So, that's where we're at as far as the timeline. On the other buildings, I am committed to economic development for the Learning Center, as well as the Chapel Building. What that means is that I'm not interested in relocating somebody from Main Street and shifting them off to the campus. We're looking for true entrepreneurship, which is that we're going to create new jobs there, or we're going to move them in. And I'm specifically focused on a multiplier effect so that we get base jobs here and that they create more restaurants, more insurance agents, whatever it is from that multiplier effect. So, I'm being very cautious not to try to just knock on people's doors and relocate them to that campus. I'm very much wanting that this is new business that is going to be taking place in Canyon City. And I work closely with Brad Roland with the Florence Properties, and Brad and I are talking about different companies that he's getting over there, but that we've got flow over. And one of the advantages that we have is we have the possibility for two redundant lines coming in for one gig lines. So, we're looking at call centers, et cetera, and those lines are something that is quite special, that we have the opportunity to do that. So, we're going to be in contact and are in contact with the number of buildings. The other last building is what you're referring to as the East Building, which we're calling the Cabrini Building because of Mother Cabrini making that. I actually have a purchase agreement on that, and that purchase agreement, I'm going to announce it tonight. We're going to close on Thursday, and so, that's taking place. And Unbridled Properties will be getting ahold of that building. So, Unbridled Properties has interest in making some connection with that, with the hotel, St. Cloud. And if you look on Seventh, they're right down the same street, and so, that is taking place. And Mr. Bullis and I will be in a closing meeting on Thursday to complete that. I will say that one of the things that is necessary, it's that this campus comes up all at the same time. We don't want orphaned buildings out there, if you will, that are sitting without the rest of the campus coming up, because it doesn't help everything. So, we're trying to do that. And part of the agreement that I've got with Mr. Bullis and Unbridled is that they complete that project at a certain period of time, because we're working on the Residence Hall, and so, we get that all up going at the same time. What is not on here is the lots, and I'll just mention that, so we talk again about the whole campus. We are getting soils tests for all the lots. We had an old soils test with a different viewpoint, but we've got a company in Colorado Springs that will be doing that soils test, and I've put it out on Facebook, are people interested in those lots, and I'm getting lots of feedback as far as interest with people just simply wanting to build on that property. So, we very well may go ahead and put in the infrastructure that Adam and others worked on to make sure we were in compliance with that and get that infrastructure in, including the alley, and then individually sell that. That's Plan B. Plan A is that we find one developer that would go ahead with that. But I'm highly interested that 2021, we'll start seeing houses going up on the lots on the north end, along floral there. So, that's the plans. And again, all of that, trying to come up at the same time. The last piece is the two-acre parcel that's in the middle. Again, all the properties, as far as pricing, allows for that piece to come together as well. So, that's what's happening. There's actually a lot going on. It keeps me busy all the time, and I do appreciate the opportunity to stand before you and tell you an update, what's going on. And this is certainly going to help with the bringing in the investments that we need for the historical tax credits and all the pieces there. So, I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have, but that's what's going on.
I'll start with a question that might have to go more to Ryan and Lisa and maybe Cory, I don't know. But Phil, you had extended some communication about the complexity of keeping the historical integrity of the building for the tax credits and life and safety features and things like that. And Lisa and Ryan, I believe that this particular program is supposed to provide a lot of flexibility with the spirit of historical renovation versus the reality of the costs of rehab.
Yeah, you know, there's a lot of moving pieces to that question, you know, especially when it comes to the Residence Hall. You know, Mr. Lund and I have had conversations about that. He is planning on putting a fire sprinkling system in that building, and that opens up a lot more flexibility as far as, you know, other requirements that would have to be made without a life, you know, without a fire sprinkling system in it.
And Phil, have you been able to get your questions answered as far as working through that, especially with the windows and egresses?
Yeah, the City Minister is correct that we have had a private conversation about that, and we've got a lot more details to go forward. What happens is it goes to the state, and the National Park Service is the one that tells us this is qualified, this is not qualified. Our intent is to submit as the windows are now, so that, again, the facade looks the same that it is. And we're moving all the heating into internal as opposed to anything that was going to be external in our original plans. And so, we're expecting that we're going to have a basic appearance that is there now. And again, Ryan and I have had that discussion. I'm sure we're going to have many more.
All right. Well, we're hoping that those discussions will continue to go well for you. We're really excited for the, for 2021 and to have progress be made. And I have a feeling that in 2022, the story of St. Scholastica will be an important piece of our 150-year celebration.
Yeah, it's got a great history, and we want to have it, have a great future as well. Okay?
Mayor Pro Tim Hamrick.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Lund, thank you for being here tonight, and this is, I think this is a project that Canyon City can be proud of. I had the opportunity to tour the East Building and saw firsthand some of the foundation problems. Have you been able to reach a resolution or a direction to go to to help resolve some of those problems?
Yeah, Unbridled and ourselves, we brought in a structural engineer, and they basically spent with the architect that was here. He had to go take some of his doggy issues that he had to deal with. So, they spent the day there, and we got an eight, nine-page report back that the, basically, everything that has happened at this point has happened and that the building is sound and it's not moving at this point further. So, what we believe happened was when they built the Chapel Building, they just didn't take care of the drainage. And so, on the north side, as you referred to, Council Hamrick, that the water just came into that north side, and anybody who's been in the basement of that building can recognize that they had some pretty significant foundation problems. But it appears that everything that's been done has been done, and the building is going to stand. And so, the good news is, they stated, you don't have to tear down the building. We think the building is sound as it is. It's not moving anymore. We're going to take care of the water issues so that the water exposure on that north side or any point in that isn't going to cause any further damage. So, I think we're in pretty good shape, and enough so that Mr. Bullis has confidence that he can purchase that building and it fits into what his plans are.
Great. That's great news. Thank you.
Any other questions from council? Councilmember Meisner.
Thanks. This is really more towards Ryan. Our safety grant, is that only for downtown?
It is. It's for the Central Business District.
And he's outside the Central Business District?
That is correct. But I do want to thank you for putting us in the urban renewal area. And at some point, I think the possibility of tax increment finance is going to be helpful for the commercial side of this effort. So, we're pleased that we are in the urban renewal area.
We're pleased you are, too. Anyone from the public wish to speak?
Thank you.
Thank you, Phil Lund. If so, I'd like to ask for a motion in a second. Councilmember Smith.
Lisa, which one do you want first? The ordinance or the resolution?
It's the ordinance.
The ordinance first?
Yeah.
Madam Mayor and Council, I move to approve Ordinance Number Six, Series of 2021, on second reading.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second. Any discussion? Call a vote, please. Councilmember Haquez.
Aye.
Councilmember Meisner.
Aye.
Councilmember Reed.
Aye.
Councilmember B. Smith.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Hamrick.
Aye.
And I am now opening, well, I'm closing the hearing on that, and now I'm going to open the hearing for the second reading and adoption by title only of Ordinance Seven, Series of 2021. And this is for the Residence Hall of Mount St. Scholastica. So, it looks like you have a report on that as well?
Yep. I apologize in advance for being a little redundant. We also received the nomination form for designating the Residence Hall of Mount St. Scholastica Academy located at 615 Pike Avenue, a local historic structure pursuant to the city's municipal code. The current owners are Homes of the Canyon Two LLC and Homes of the Canyon LLC. The property owners have been duly notified of this public hearing by signs posted on the property and by mail. The construction, the original construction of this building was in 1961. The original owners were the... The original owners were the Catholic Benedictine Sisters of Chicago. The architect was Langford and McGuire of Denver, and the builder, or general contractor, was Ross E. Cox Company, I believe also of Denver, and the site, the structure has not moved from its original location. As I stated in the previous staff report, the residence hall is a three-story block structure with a brick and painted concrete exterior facade and is of expressionist and international style of American architecture. The structure has a rectangular design with a 150-degree breaking form, forming two large wings. The residence hall was the first of many structures constructed on the campus of the St. Scholastica Academy by the Benedictine Sisters of Chicago during the second half of the 20th century. The structure was built to accommodate the growing enrollment at the school in 1961. According to the Canyon City Daily Record, 100 Years of Progress Special Edition, the dormitory cost $750,000 to build and was part of the first phase of a long-range building program planned by the sisters to operate the academy. The residence hall included a lobby, reception area, a large recreational room, rooms set up for hobbies, crafts, sewing, and even a photographic darkroom. The large dining room and cafeteria occupied much of the main floor in the east wing. The residence hall housed up to 104 student boarders with rooms on the second and third floors of the dormitory. The residence hall served as a communal living area for all boarding students that attended St. Scholastica Academy from 1962 to 2001. In addition to after-school studying, school dances, banquets, pageants, and even, and more, many other social activities were held in this structure during its roughly 40-year history. As I mentioned in the previous hearing, Mount St. Scholastica was one of, was the longest operating private schools in Canyon City, contributing to the education of thousands of young women from 1890 to 2001. Young women from all over Colorado, the United States, and even the world attended this boarding school and lived in this dormitory. St. Scholastica Academy and the residence hall in particular are linked to the small but noteworthy community of Catholic Benedictine Sisters of Chicago, who established the school and to the educational history of Canyon City. The residence hall quite literally became a home away from home for hundreds of young women who attended St. Scholastica from the spring of 1962 to when St. Scholastica Academy closed in 2001. Under these findings of fact, the structure meets the criteria for designation as listed in the city's ordinance. The site is at least 50 years old. The structure represents a built environment of a group of people in an era of history. The structure exemplifies cultural and political, economic, or social heritage in the community, and the structure is identified with historic personages or groups. Public hearing was held on January 27th for the Historic Preservation Commission, and they voted to support unanimously the resolution recommending to city council approval of resident, the residence hall of Mount St. Scholastica located at 615 Pike Avenue to be designated as a local historic structure. City staff recommends city council vote to approve ordinance seven in series 2021, which cites these findings of facts to designate Mount St. Scholastica Residence Hall as a local historic structure. That concludes my staff report. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Lisa. I actually have a question for former Commissioner Tim Payne. Did you ever attend any Sweetheart Balls at St. Scholastica? That's an important part of this historical designation.
You don't have to ask that, Tim. My mom graduated from there in 1941.
Oh, wow. Well, there you go. Councilmember Meisner.
It's kind of a question for Phil, but you'd mentioned windows. You're talking about the style would be the same, or that you're not replacing those?
No, we're replacing
Okay.
The opening
Right, okay.
Any other questions from council? Any comments from the public? Then I would like to close this public hearing and ask for a motion in a second. Brandon Smith.
Is it resolution two or seven?
It's ordinance seven.
Ordinance seven, resolution number two?
No resolution.
No resolution.
The resolution's
Ah, here we go. All right, Madam Mayor and council, I move to approve ordinance number seven, series of 2021.
A second. Yep. On the second reading, and there has been a motion and a second. Any discussion? Call vote, please. Councilmember Hockes.
Aye.
Councilmember Meisner.
Aye.
Councilmember Reed.
Aye.
Councilmember B. Smith.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Hammack.
Aye.
Thank you, city council. Congratulations, Phil Lund, and best of luck on your endeavors. All right, we are now on item D, and I'm going to open the public hearing again for Fire Station Number Three property at 3020 East Main Street, annexation zoning and minor Chief Delvecchio, when I ran in, when we saw you just the other day, you said this project is going to aid you considerably, and now that I have the packet delivered and read through all of this, I can understand why. This is just one tiny piece, and I don't even want to read it. I'm going to turn it over to you, our attorney, Corey Hoffman, to read all of these resolutions and ordinances that we're going to need to be passing tonight.
Okay, so council will be considering the following legislation. First, first reading and adoption by title only of resolution number five, series of 2021, and I know on the agenda it says 2020 for all of these, but the packet is correct. The agenda is wrong. The packet has it as 2021. Entitled a resolution making certain findings of fact regarding the proposed annexation of parcels of unincorporated territory located in the county of Fremont, Fire Station Number Three, Annexation Number One and Number Two. Introduction in First Reading by Title Only of Ordinance Number Eight, Series of 2021, entitled an ordinance of the city of Canyon City approving and accomplishing the annexation of certain unincorporated lands known as Fire Station Number Three, Annexation Number One, to the city of Canyon City, Colorado. Introduction in First Reading by Title Only of Ordinance Number Nine, Series of 2021, entitled an ordinance of the city of Canyon City approving and accomplishing the annexation of certain unincorporated lands known as Fire Station Number Three, Annexation Number Two to the city of Canyon City, Colorado. And finally, introduction in first reading by title only of Ordinance Ten, Series of 2021, entitled an ordinance of the city of Canyon City zoning certain property recently annexed into Canyon City, Fire Station Number Three, Annexation Number One and Number Two.
Well done, Attorney Corey Hoffman.
And then you will also be considering the Fire Station Minor Subdivision as your last item.
Yes, item five.
As topic.
I believe we'll turn the time over now to Patrick Mulready, our city planner.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the city council. This evening, we are here to consider the request by the Canyon City Area Fire Protection District concerning the property they seek to develop as the location for Fire Station Number Three at 3020 East Main Street. This property is not currently within the incorporated limits of Canyon City. This is therefore a public hearing before the city council to consider the fire district's request to annex, zone, and subdivide the subject property. Subject property is located at 3020 East Main Street. It is 6.02 acres in area and is situated approximately 1,350 feet west of the intersection of East Main Street and Steinmeier Avenue. Although the site is currently vacant, there is an existing water tap which serves the site, indicating that a building was once located there, most likely a residence. It is unclear when the structure would have been removed, but from available records from the county assessor's database, it would seem to indicate the demolition occurred more than 40 years ago. As council will recall, last year, Canyon City's annexation procedures were modified to make them consistent with state statute, and in the process, simplified the steps involved in successfully annexing property into the city. The fire district property, however, revealed an unexpected complication when it was submitted to staff for review that isn't readily discernible at the scale of this vicinity map you are currently seeing. Between the fire district property and the NNS subdivision to the east where BLM, the BLM offices are located, there exists an eight-foot-wide strip of land, or gap, which prevents the fire district property from using its easterly boundary as a point of contiguity. It appears that this gap was once used as a ditch for irrigation purposes, and that use eventually ceased. The assessor's office does not list any owner of record for this eight-foot-wide strip, so it has been left out of the annexation request in an effort to expedite, expeditiously move the fire district's annexation request along. State statute requirements specify a minimum contiguity to an existing municipal boundary. In order to meet these minimums, and because of the existing eight-foot gap, the fire district property will be annexed as two separate pieces, or series. Colorado law permits this, and this is why there are two ordinances presented to council annexing the property. Ordinance number eight will annex the northerly half of the property, and ordinance number nine will annex the southerly half of the property. It should be noted that annexing property into pieces does not create separate parcels. Contiguity under annexation is an exercise in geometry, not the physical partitioning of the land. The eight-foot gap will remain an unannexed parcel until the fire district can acquire the property and annex it at a later time. Finally, concerning the annexation, it should be noted that the subject property was designated part of the priority annexation area in a 2009 resolution of the city council. Its annexation will help contribute to the annexation of the properties along the East Main Street corridor. And in all other respects, this annexation makes state statutory requirements for annexation, and these points are clarified in resolution number five before council this evening. Canyon City Area Fire Protection District has requested a zoning of C, general commercial district, as defined in section 17.12.130 of the Canyon City Municipal Code. As part of an annexation, all properties must concurrently request a zone district be applied to the subject property, and the zoning must be one which is established within the Canyon City Municipal Code. Now, this should not be thought of as a rezoning, since the property has not previously been zoned in Canyon City. Therefore, the three criteria applied to rezoning requests in section 17.40 of the municipal code are not applicable in this instance. C, general commercial, is the zoning most commonly applied to parcels within the city, within the city limits along the East Main Street, US Highway 50, and Fremont Drive corridor. Indeed, in the three most recent annexations along East Main Street processed in the last decade, all three, which include the Great Western Storage Property at 3070 East Main, the NNS subdivision which houses both the Bureau of Land Management's regional offices and Big O Tire, and the new Creations Inn property at 2990 East Main, have all been granted a C, general commercial zoning. Thus, there is an established precedent in applying C, general commercial at this location. The fire district has proposed a minor subdivision for this property to create three lots consistent with commercial zoning, in a configuration not unlike the neighboring NNS subdivision to the east. As proposed, there would be two smaller lots adjacent to each main, East Main Street, and a larger lot to the south. Lot one would be 40,495 square feet, or 0.93 acres in area, while lot two would be 32,679 square feet, or 0.75 acres in area. As the two smaller lots within this proposed subdivision, they will exceed the minimum lot size required under the C, general commercial district zoning, which is, for the record, 5,280 square feet as a minimum. It will exceed that amount by quite a lot. Both of these lots do not have end users at this time. The largest lot will be lot three, and it is intended as the location for the future Fire Station Number Three to be processed by a forthcoming application for site plan. Lot three would be 187,563 square feet, or 4.31 acres in area, and it would encompass a shared common access drive extending south from Main Street to provide access to all three lots. Staff finds this arrangement of lots to be an efficient use of the acreage of these parcels along East Main Street, and in that it consolidates curb cut accesses to Main Street while it ensures each lot has its own ingress and egress. It is the same concept not used not only for the NNS subdivision, but also for the Best Corner subdivision at Steinmeier and East Main, where you will find Jewett's Liquors and Champion Express Car Wash. Obviously, the internal circulation for each lot and its parking requirements will be evaluated as site plans are submitted for each lot, and each lot will be required to install curb, gutter, and sidewalk along their frontage of East Main Street as they develop. City council should note that if approved, the minor subdivision must lag behind finalization of the annexation and zoning, as the city won't have the legal jurisdiction to formally subdivide the property until the state of Colorado is informed the annexation has occurred. Staff anticipates the minor subdivision will likely be recorded sometime in mid to late March. And it should be noted that the granting of access permit for this subdivision will occur through C dot and will be deferred until site plan. This is per the city engineer and the access manager at C dot region two. Now, in considering the annexation of the fire district property, these are the relevant factors. All of the parcels along the East Main Street corridor are the subject of a 2009 council resolution which established them as priority annexation areas. This includes the Fire Station parcel at 3020 East Main Street. The fire district property meets state statutory requirements for annexation, and those requirements are part of the findings in resolution number five before council this evening. State statute allows for a series annexation in which parts of the property are annexed in sequence. Because of the existence of an eight-foot strip of land along the easterly boundary of the fire district property, this annexation will be done as two series annexations. The two series annexations will be accomplished with the sequential adoption of ordinances eight and nine. Finally, with respect to the annexation request, the proposed fire district property annexation is not only consistent with state statute, but is also consistent with the city's recently revised procedures for the annexation of property contiguous to an existing city boundary. With respect to the zoning evaluation, as discussed earlier, there is a distinction to be drawn between a first-time zoning request and a rezoning of a parcel already within the city limits. Zonings happen concurrently with an annexation, and they are therefore not subject to the criteria used to evaluate rezoning requests. With this in mind, zonings must be considered against the recommendations of the city's comprehensive plan, as well as precedents the city has established with similar requests along this portion of East Main Street. As city council may be aware, the city is currently updating our comprehensive plan, which was last updated in 2001. Even as long ago as that, the concurrent, the current comprehensive plan understood the commercial potential of the East Main Street corridor and recommended future land uses as part of annexations include commercial designations. A commercial designation for this property continues the pattern of zonings applied to new annexations along the corridor for the last decade. These annexations in particular were granted C, general commercial zonings, and that includes the neighboring NNS subdivision, as well as the Great Western Storage Property and the New Creations Inn at 2990 East Main. Therefore, staff finds the requested C, general commercial district to not be not only consistent with the recommendations of the comprehensive plan, but also the established policies and practices for parcels along the East Main Street corridor. With respect to the minor subdivision request, staff notes that the three-lot configuration for the property would create three lots for commercial use, which adhere to the minimum lot frontage and area requirements specified in the C, general commercial zoning district, as defined in the city's municipal code. It also consolidates the accesses for all three lots to a single point of ingress and egress along East Main Street, yet still provides adequate internal access to each lot via a shared common access driveway. This particular three-lot configuration is not without precedent for developments along East Main Street. This configuration creates opportunities for sales tax generating commercial uses on the two lots adjacent to Main Street by maximizing their visibility from Highway 50, and yet allows a larger office-type commercial within the interior of the subdivision. All three lots will be required to establish curb, gutter, and sidewalk along East Main, their East Main Street frontage, which is required with minor subdivisions. These will be These will be addressed as part of the evaluation of forthcoming site plans for each lot, which means in all other aspects, this proposal is consistent with the requirements for minor subdivisions as stated in Title sixteen, Appendix A, the Canyon City Municipal Code. And it should be noted that consideration of the access into this subdivision from Main Street will be deferred until submitted and reviewed of site plans for the future fire station. And with that, staff has determined that following a public hearing on this matter, staff recommends council approve the annexation request for the fire district property by the sequential adoption of resolution number five, followed by ordinances eight and nine in your agenda packets this evening. Staff and the planning commission recommend city council approve the zoning request for the fire district property at thirty twenty East Main to C, General Commercial District with the adoption of ordinance number ten in your agenda packets this evening. And finally, staff and the planning commission recommend that city council approve the fire station minor subdivision request at thirty twenty East Main with the stipulation that recordation of the minor plat not occur until after the annexation ordinances are recorded, published, and the state has been notified of the change in the city's boundaries. That would conclude staff's presentation. As always, I'm happy to answer any questions that council may have. We also have Chief David Del Vecchio here to speak on behalf of the project as the applicant.
Thank you, Patrick. I will start with a question from council member Meisner.
Thank you, Patrick. First question is to you. I would logically assume that this would meet our, I don't know that it's relevant, but the new land use proposed? I mean, it falls within those guidelines?
The new land use is also proposed in commercial along this corridor.
Can I keep going? The next question is more like the Hammack rule. If you go to, can you go to that large map of zone or section three or lot three? The question, the eight-foot, the eight-foot
Ditch?
Problem property, is that, is that currently used for any drainage at all, Adam?
It has no use associated with it at all right now.
So it's of no value drainage-wise?
Correct.
So then my second Hammack question is, that little squiggly line through lot three, what is that?
That is the floodplain boundary.
Oh.
What does that mean, Adam?
That means that when they come in for site plan and building permit, they'll have to mitigate that, and they have plans and they're working on that now. But it's a, it's a very shallow sheet flow, so there's no, there's no particular drainage channel across this property.
How much elevation rise?
It's not much. It's fairly shallow. But they're, they're working on what that final number is.
Okay, hasn't been determined?
No.
But they know it now while they're planning, and there's yet another wrinkle.
And then, if I may keep going, you mentioned Highway fifty access. Normally, when you see this, there's a set of lights out on the highway that are activated by the fire department. When those, when those vehicles emerge out of that fire department, is that part of the highway access plan, or what's going to happen there?
Long, long term, we know, our, our initial thoughts and plans have been that there'll be a signal at the abbey entrance, and the abbey entrance, we know, will probably move east a little bit from where it's at currently. And so, we know this access will change in the future, whether it closes or becomes a right-in, right-out. So depending on which direction the, the trucks are responding to, they may use that future signal, or, or, or again, back further to the east, that signal.
How far is the abbey from, from there? That proposed signal on that plan?
I want to say it's about five hundred feet.
East or west?
Yeah, west, yes.
And then, what's going to happen with those two small lots? Did I miss that?
They, they are unplanned at the present time. They are going to be available for future commercial development.
And our economic development team is also working with Chief Del Vecchio to try and find uses for those properties.
Thank you, Mayor.
I'd like to invite Chief Del Vecchio up if he'd like to address council, please.
Take my backup.
And Board Member Tim Payne.
Good evening, everyone. Thanks for having us here. I'd like to congratulate Patrick for being able to read all of that without stumbling over anything. If you have any questions, if you want to go that route first, and I can give you a little history on why we're looking at this location.
Mayor Pro Tim Hammack?
Sure. I just, kind of a personal interest question. So lot three is where the new fire station is going to be built?
Yes, that'll be actually the, the new fire station, the new administration headquarters, as well as a training facility at the south end of that property, the back end.
And lots one and two, is there, the fate of those, is that, what is your, what's the intention for, for those lots?
Well, originally, that was kind of a appeasement with the city for taking an entire commercial property off of the possible tax rules. No, and honestly, you know, Ryan and I had some conversations when I first broached Ryan and Patrick about us looking to purchase that lot for a fire station. You know, it is in the prime commercial development zone. So part of the discussion, you know, came up, there's enough land there for us to accomplish what we needed with the fire station and training facility. One of the problems, we own a lot on the corner of Independence and Justice Center, which was supposed to be the, the station three lot. It's only one point seven five acres, and the ISO Insurance Service Office requires a minimum of two acres for credit for a fire training facility. So we were looking for a larger lot to start with, but also a better lot location for response to that, that end of the city, that end of district. So this, this became a prime opportunity for us. We looked at numerous lots. Actually, I was in conversation with the abbey developers for that property, and you wouldn't think that being on the opposite side of Highway fifty would be that much different, but it did, it did adversely affect some response routes that we have planned for this location. So we took a lot of different things into consideration with this. So the commercial lots, now that I'm looking at the estimated pricing on, on the project itself, the funds that we would probably garner from selling the commercial lots will probably not outweigh anything based on the entire site cost versus smaller site costs going forward. But we've had a conversation with a potential developer. He's been in conversation with, I think, Rick Harmon. I'm not sure if he's talked to Patrick or Ryan. So there's a couple of possibilities for that lot. I spoke with Adam this evening a little bit about that as well, because C dot comes into play on this, and there's some concerns about the fire district's ingress and egress out of that for emergency responses, depending on what happens at those commercial lots. So I've already had conversations with Brenda Jackson, the district's attorney, regards to incorporating some stipulations on those lots to limit the possibility of, you know, Chick-fil-A has been mentioned as being put on there, and if you drive by a Chick-fil-A during lunch hour or dinnertime, Highway fifty would be backed up, East Main would be backed up, and, and we wouldn't be able to get out to any calls for service, so. So there's, there's some stipulations that we have to iron out going forward with those aspects there, so.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Council Member Meisner.
God, I knew you were going to do that. I got to listen to the chief and forgot what it's going to ask.
Tell us more, chief. Tell us more about, I know there's a special reason why this
Oh, I know.
... third fire station needs to go in.
Well, we, back in, before I was here, I've been here ten years now. In two thousand and six, the fire district commissioned a study with a third-party consultant in regard to district operations and future needs. And back in two thousand and six, they identified the need for more staffing, more personnel, and a new station. So, and actually, it started in two thousand and five, I believe, but in two thousand and six, they, that was the first time they hired new firefighters in, it was probably ten years, I think it was. So they increased staffing at that time, and the station has been floating around since then. I came here in two thousand and eleven, and in two thousand and thirteen, we started meeting with the current architects that we're currently working with as well, and we had a station designed for a station on Justice Center Road. But due to economic issues at the time, that project got put on hold. So with recent developments in the finances of the district, the last middle of the election we had, we've set a game plan for this new station, and we are, we're chipping away at it. I think we've got a very good shot of seeing this through to completion on time for what we're looking at, and it's going to be a huge impetus for safety in the community. That east end of our fire district, east end of the city, and then beyond the city limits, is underserved for emergency response. That area is served by the station on North Fifteenth Street. So you can imagine how long it takes to leave that station, go through the traffic on Highway fifty, and get to the very east end of the community there, also all the way out to Four Mile Parkway. So there's some really extended response times in that area. This station will take a lot of those responses directly to the east of that location, as well as a portion of responses to the west. So between the three stations, we'll, we'll also even out the responses from each station as we go forward. It'll reduce the workload on, on Station one, which is probably about sixty percent busier than Station two, but only because of travel areas and response routes and things like that, so. So it's, it's going to provide a big impetus for our operations within the community. It's going to allow us to provide a much better level of service to the entire community in this main populated area. We still have concerns with the top of Eight Mile, but we have tentative plans to address that as well going into the future, too, so.
Does this not also affect, like, the community's fire rating and our insurance rates?
I'm glad you brought that up. So our last ISO rating was back in two thousand and fourteen, and we were able to drop to a, basically a three rating, and that rating system goes from a one to a ten, one being the best. And as you get closer to that one, there's less and less fire departments across the country that are, are rated at those levels. We were, we were very close to a two rating at that time. We did not get credit for training facility. We did not get credit for some of the communications systems, which if, for some of you that were here, the new dispatch center went online in two thousand and fifteen, just after our ISO review. Some of our response time issues came to light in, in that report as well. So I'm, I'm pretty confident that once the station is completed and we get the staffing changed and our response routes changing around for each of the three stations, we'll have a new ISO review, and I'm pretty confident we'll go to a two and might even be close to a one.
Awesome. All right, well, back to you, Council Member Meisner.
Well, she kind of stole my fire, and that was a question that I forgot. This is that you mentioned the value of that lot that currently is nothing. So, in my opinion, that gets to be questionable in terms of you took something that wasn't there. But the point is, that ISO rating is for the entire area, but there's got to be a significant change, at least for that easterly part of the community, that's getting impacted by that.
Well, there'd be, there'd be a significant change in response times for any type of emergency, because that station will be a lot closer to a lot of that area. It's interesting, though, I think, if you look at the ISO rating map, all of that area is still rated a three on that, and the only, the only outlying areas where it changes was predominantly when you got into the non-hydranted areas of our fire district. You know, all the city areas have hydrants, so they're, they're all at three. But then as you get to the outskirts of those areas, the rating changed to, and they changed the rating system, it's a three Y now, which used to be like an eight B, so that was eight out of ten on that scale for those non-hydranted areas.
Thank you.
Any other questions from council? Tim Payne, would you like to address council as well?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm the president of the Fire District Board. I've been on that board eleven years now, and every year that I've been on that board, we've had an increase in calls of service, and that's what kind of prompted the mill levy increase for two thousand and eighteen, to be able to get, go forward with this third fire station. But the, the underlying factor is the increased call for service and our commitment to provide the best service we can for our, for the public. And so that's, that's one of the driving forces behind this, is the increasing calls and service, along with the ISO rating. Thanks.
Thank you both. If there's no further questions, I'd like to close this public hearing and ask, we're going to go through each motion individually. Ryan, do you have something for us?
Yeah, I, I just want to tell council, on the third page of the cover memo, there's the list of suggested motions and the order that they should go in.
So the first
Good morning.
... motion would be for
Resolution five.
Resolution five. A motion and a second for resolution five. Council Member Smith.
Madam Mayor and council, I move to approve resolution number five, series of two thousand and twenty-one by title.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second? Any discussion? Call for a vote. Council Member Haquez.
Aye.
Council Member Meisner.
Aye.
Council Member Reed.
Aye.
Council Member B. Smith.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Hammack.
Aye.
Thank you, council. We'll now ask for a motion and a second on ordinance eight. Council Member Reed.
Madam Mayor and council, I move to approve ordinance number eight, series of two thousand and twenty-one by title on first reading, and set the second reading for March first of two thousand and twenty-one.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second? Any discussion? Call a vote. Council Member Haquez.
Aye.
Council Member Meisner.
Aye.
Council Member Reed.
Aye.
Council Member B. Smith.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Hammack.
Aye.
Thank you, council. I will now ask for a motion and a second on ordinance nine. Mayor Pro Tim Hammack.
Madam Mayor and council, I move to approve ordinance number nine, series of two thousand and twenty-one by title on first reading and set second reading for March first, two thousand and twenty-one.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second? Any discussion? Roll call vote. Council Member Haquez.
Aye.
Council Member Meisner.
Aye.
Council Member Reed.
Aye.
Council Member B. Smith.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Hammack.
Aye.
Thank you, council. Now I will ask for motion and a second on ordinance ten.
Madam Mayor and council, I move that we approve ordinance number ten, series of two thousand and twenty-one by title on first reading and set second reading for March first, two thousand and twenty-one.
There's been a motion and a second? Any discussion? Second? Who's my second?
Second.
No, there wasn't a second. Now there is a second. Thank you. And we'll roll call vote. Council Member Haquez.
Aye.
Council Member Meisner.
Aye.
Council Member Reed.
Aye.
Council Member B. Smith.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Hammack.
Aye.
I will now ask for a motion and a second on the fire station minor subdivision. Council Member Reed.
Madam Mayor and council, I move to approve the fire station minor subdivision with the stipulation that it not be recorded until the ordinances annexing the property have been published and recorded, and the state of Colorado has been informed of the change in the city's incorporated boundaries.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second? Any discussion? Roll call vote, please. Council Member Haquez.
Aye.
Council Member Meisner.
Aye.
Council Member Reed.
Aye.
Council Member B. Smith.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Hammack.
Aye.
All right, one step closer to the fire district. Congratulations.
Little gray red.
This meeting is now adjourned.